Call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, infinite and eternal.
Here.
First, I'd like to have the committee offer a moment of silence or hold a moment of silence for the, for Danvers actually, for the teacher that was murdered and the student and all the students there, offer our sympathies to their family and the whole community. First we'll announce this meeting is being recorded by Saugus Cable Television. If anyone else is recording the meeting, would you please announce it at this time?
I'm not recording anybody.
No, that's okay. But thank you. Is there any public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to student representative report.
Aye.
Hi, I'm Samantha Delaney. I'm the class representative for the class 2015 and just here to talk about some of the fundraising we did. This past September, we did Founder's Day, which we had two tables. We had Hilltop as a food table and then we also had a game table where we had a game and we sold sunglasses and class t-shirts. Then this past month, we also participated in Cowloon Night, which was fundraiser for all the classes. And this past weekend, we went to the Riviere Flea Market and we had a booth there, which was very successful. And right now, we're just planning our junior prom that's coming up this January. And we also had a question for you. I think it's a rule that we're not allowed to do raffles. Is that?
No, that's not a rule.
That's not a rule?
No. There's certain guidelines.
Is that a guideline?
There's guidelines and there's a...
The guidelines are not set by the school department?
They're not?
No, they're set by the town clerk's office. So if your student group would like to do a raffle, then I suggest you simply, someone simply go up to town hall and ask them how to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we do have approval of minutes. We have the open session of October 10th, 2013.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dusset.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 10th, 2013.
Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have the executive session minutes dated February 2011 through June 2013.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Riley?
Make a motion to accept the executive minutes dated from 2/9/2011 to June 27th, 2013.
Madam Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do have a few other minutes still on the table and pretty soon those will be wrapped up. Next, we do have voting of the warrants. Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to highlight here?
Yes, the warrant you see before you includes the first installment payment for our annual busing contract, as well as out-of-district tuition, other expenses for the normal operating of a school district, as well as you will see electricity costs beginning to spike now that it's September and everyone's back in school. That's about it.
Do you have any questions?
I have a question in regards to the comment you made about the electricity. Have we straightened out our problems with the gas at the high school? Where do we stand with that?
As far as I know, yes, it is. National grid has been made aware of it. I do know that they are replacing meters at some of our schools. Other than that, you know, Santa Buckley did give us the credit due to the meter problem. So the issue did not lie with Santa Buckley per se.
Is there any other questions before Ms. Riley?
Make a motion to ex-approve the warrants dated October 24th, 2013, prepared by Bola Andrews, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, in the total of $204,746.41.
Madam Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do have the financial report.
Yes, thank you. As of September 30th, 2013, the Saugus Public Schools has expended and encumbered $4,290,865 against the appropriation. Now that school has opened its doors and all the staff has pretty much been hired and set in place and our needs have been identified, I've spent the time since our last meeting aligning the budget. And you will see before your budget entry, number three, which is quite lengthy. The first page corrects five salary line items due to late hires and it allocates the recent paraprofessional contract increases to the applicable line items. The second page applies increases for column movement to the applicable line item. Due to the fact that some of the movements were for positions charged to all-day kindergarten and the preschool revolving fund, it freed up some funds, which I would request to apply for shortfalls in Title II-A and Title I salary funding. So the amounts for those, the shortfall amounts, were approximately $18,000 for Title II-A and $23,500 for Title I. The third page begins with the request to apply turnover savings to a salary line item. Oh, I'm sorry, it was the Title I, which was moved to the second page. The third page is a request for a budget transfer to support the purchase of Mandarin textbooks and additional biology books at Saugus High, funds the purchase of drying tables at the Belmonte, and transfers funding from the Belmonte math supply line item to the computer hardware line item in order to purchase 20 Epson BrightLinks so that every classroom at Belmonte School will now have a smart board. There is also an additional request to transfer funds from the Belmonte Middle School Math Supply line item to fund Discovery Ed for the elementary K through 2 grades to support science education. The science program was very successful with the older elementary students last year, as you remember. Would you like me to read the budget transfers for the requests? To read them out? Or suffice? Okay. There was also a request last month to notify the committee of the outstanding carryovers from FY 13. I'm happy to report there's only one invoice outstanding as of today and it is for $949. Can I answer any questions?
We still don't have the product or the, that was to pay for? What's the $949 for?
No, I don't believe we have the product and the invoice is outstanding.
It's just getting later in the year, you know? It's getting later now.
It is. I'm sure it'll be resolved. I mean, sometimes, you know, you wait till the opening of school, maybe they had a change in what they chose and they're waiting for it.
Committee, you have any questions? We have a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dusset.
Make a motion to approve financial budget entry number three.
You need to reference the document unless you want to read the whole thing.
It's budget entry number three.
Did I miss something?
No, no, that would be, in your database, this will, this document is forever classified as budget entry number three, correct?
That's correct.
So that is, that is the actual document name.
That is. Chair will second.
It's submitted to us on today's date.
Yes, typically dated and, but that's fine. We can date it when we sign it.
Sure, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we could sign the document now, so. Did you want to mention the food service report or?
Yes, the food service report is included in your packet. It did arrive late this month and with an apology accompanying to it. There has been an increase in sales for lunch, particularly at the high school, so that is, that is good to see. And there's been a small increase in breakfast sales at one of the elementary schools and a slight increase at the others. Food Service Director is working to continuously tweak the menu, to offer products that, you know, the students would like to see and would like to purchase.
What about the staff? It doesn't seem like many adult lunches are sold and I'm curious if there's any way they can address or tweak the menu for...
They did have the food service survey last year. I believe there was a request for salads and I think one of the things that I've already heard is despite the fact that they've gone back to the old system where they had, you know, one salad for the whole, every day that everyone would know was on the menu, it really hasn't done well. Listen, sales have not been good for those products.
My question in the same line is you've only sold, we've only sold for the month $59.55 worth of adult lunch throughout the whole district. How much is adult lunch and does it vary from school to school or is it all the same price?
I don't have that information in front of me.
It's the same price.
Yeah, I think it's the same price. I thought it was about a $4 mark.
I think it's $3 and change, $3.50?
Just a little, like 50 cents more than what the regular lunch is.
So $3, 10.
Something like that. Ms. Sabowski?
Yeah.
I apologize, but I'm seeing, when you look at the combined all buildings on the, on page seven of seven.
Yeah.
Okay, if you look almost on the top, it says adults lunch, 271 lunches, $964.
But if you look at, what's the prepaid revenue summary?
That means they're paying online.
Oh, okay.
I just expected it was going to pick up after the survey. I did.
Well, it did.
Really?
Right? It did.
It did.
The lunches have picked up. I mean, there's a...
I meant the adult lunches.
Yeah, there's a steady increase. And again, I did not, you know, I received this late yesterday afternoon. I didn't have time to review it. I would also like to mention to the community, to the committee, that I did have the opportunity to spend the entire today, day today at town hall, working on MUNIS and building the chart of accounts and very excited to be there and to begin the process.
A lot of people excited about it.
I am very excited.
Now, that's rolling out in phases from what I understand and I don't know much about the MUNIS, but I know they had said that it's going to roll out in phases, so financials first and then...
That's correct. That's correct.
So how long do you think before the whole system will be up?
We're hoping for it to be online by July 1st and I'm not sure they're going to run two systems at once and I, I'm not really clear on the timetable for that. I think time will tell as we get further into the project.
And we'll have training to go along with that?
Absolutely.
Very good.
I have one other question. Under the prepaid revenue summary?
Yes.
Charges, credit extended, $3,869?
That's correct. Part of that is because of the free and reduced applications, the timing of them, getting families recertified and re-verified. So you're going to see that come down. At some point, the Food Service Director will come back with the real number of obligations because of the way, the timing, you know, families who no longer qualify but yet received free meals in September. She'll come back with the real number and ask the committee if they want to absolve it or how they want to approach that. I believe last year was around $500.
So you don't have a figure right now of what has not been put up?
No, because this is September. This is September, so that's something we've been working on. And I must say that I personally appreciate that the committee voted to increase the salary for that position. The person in that position has been doing a wonderful job and been very diligent going through all the applications and I believe it's going to make a tremendous difference.
One other question, just procedurally. Is there any way that this report can be?
I apologize. Mrs. McNeil and I have been through it.
Lengthwise instead of widthwise?
It will not turn.
It's not landscape?
No, I understand it will not turn.
If I go like this, I can read it.
Soon as we come to the financial report, the whole committee goes.
Technology, a wonderful thing.
We were not able to turn the food service report or the budget entry. We just can't do it.
Because their landscape, we can't...
We tried. I personally haven't tried. Mrs. McNeil has tried because she sets it up for the school committee packet and she has not been able to do so. I'd be happy to provide paper copies if you want to go back to that, of the food service report alone, or even the cover page perhaps. If committee members need paper copies, they can always come in or give a call for that. It's not necessary for every financial document.
Thank you.
We can put it up on the big screen.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, we do have, let's see, superintendent's report.
Sure. And the, what I have for the weekly highlight, I have again gone to the Oakland Vale Elementary School and I know that I haven't, I'm already doubling up one school, but I think it's with good reason. And I was very impressed with the Fear the Beard campaign and Ms. Sabowski's class of her students, again, continuing with their, the concept of teamwork throughout the class and throughout the Oak. But they, what they did was, it was really impressive. They created a scrapbook of how they use teamwork in, in support of the Red Sox as they go into the World Series. They created beards themselves and there's a very cute class picture of the entire class with their Fear the Beard sign. And they, the life-size David Ortiz cut out in the room also was adorned with, with some facial hair as well. And it seems to be working so far, okay, in game one and we hope that will continue with game two, so, later tonight, this evening. Next item I have is I was very impressed with my first trivia night at the Cowloons. What a, what an event. It was the best school fundraiser I've ever been a part of. Everyone had a great time. The team varsity from Saugus High School took home the bragging rights for the year with the trophy and I think the true winners were ultimately the schools, but the SBC with their teamwork and bringing the community together. Mr. Smolinski again did a fantastic job with that. They raised over $7,355 that they intend to give back to the, to the schools to help offset programs and we are very thankful for that. What was, also came out of that too is some initial conversations already with some of the members of the group and meeting to potentially have a spring sports trivia contest. And Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Hashem are working with the SBC on that. And actually, we may have a team. So, but, but basically what was suggested, which I thought was a wonderful idea and actually, Mr. Warren himself, I had a conversation with him about this, about targeting an offset for the, for the athletic fees for students. Everything raised in that night targeted for that one purpose. I know that has come up from the committee and it's certainly something that we would, would support, obviously gifted towards that effort and it's, it's again, a great community effort. So our hats off to that. I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable last week and also my first ever live Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Board meeting, which was, which was pretty fascinating. We're so, so very close to that. Superintendents from around the Commonwealth were invited to attend and they discussed kind of the park assessment and where that is going and district determined measures and it was really interesting observing that process and things are, things are going well with that. It was interesting also to see the very much, the department's board meeting is very much like a regular board meeting as you folks were on, only some, some of the topics were, it was really intriguing to see people from, there were one in particular, they were talking about some of the frame content within the frameworks and different people were presenting on what, what they felt might want to be in, in the frameworks and not. It was just an interesting process. My last item that I have is a focus area. It came up in a recent meeting requesting looking into the vans and transportation and we are starting that, that process and as, as we're digging into those contracts and looking at, with Ms. Andrews and looking at different documents and, and funding for those documents and what we're trying to do is take apart the entire budget and look at how we spend for the three major areas of the transportation budget and the policies that affect those. Because there is a correlation there, we, we are going to maintain the same policies that we have in the past and not, not change those until we know what is more cost-effective. And with that in mind, we don't know, we want to make sure if we're targeting to use vans more or less, basically what, what makes the most sense. And I think right now, at a cursory view, it looks like we want to expand the usage of the vans for the cost-effective and the biggest variable there being, excuse me, the new athletic league and looking at the, at the contract and that. And we only have one season so far, but we're going to project the next seasons with those actuals to those locations, so. Mr. O'Leary is in the process of breaking that down as we speak. That is all I have.
Committee, you have any questions?
Just a question on the, I know we talked about it the last committee meeting, but with the use of the vans and such, to my understanding, no vans have been used this current school year for athletic events and I know you're going to work on it, but to me, that's kind of time sensitive. We don't want to go further on into the season without using those vans. I don't understand why they haven't been utilized so far this year when they have in the past, but I know you're going to look into it and hopefully we'll get that squared away.
I think some have been used. I don't think they're being used as often and what I don't know offhand is if it's, if it's a factor of the new league or what, what the situation is on that, but I will get that information for you.
Thank you.
I was going to think, what team would use them right now, but probably the golf team.
Yeah.
Golf, tennis and...
The smaller teams.
Yeah. But yeah, there is a false.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. On to the report of Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Mr. Bruno?
We, our first, the first is our first deadline for new teacher evaluations coming up on November 1st, so all educators, administrators included, are finalizing their SMART goals. So as we've mentioned before, all educators across the district set one measurable goal related to student learning and a second related to their own professional practice. So evaluators and teachers have been meeting to finalize these and, and once those are complete and outlined action plans on the steps they're going to take to achieve and work towards their goals, that document becomes their educator plan for, for the year and all of those are going to be signed off on and made official by the end of this month, so by November 1st. We have had our first program leader meeting, so all program leaders, we have a total of 12 across the six through 12 have been chosen. We've got a great group of, of teachers who are already informal leaders in their respective buildings, so I think we're going to have a great team with our program leaders on board and really help with the efforts to, to continue to work on common assessments and identify district determined measures, which is, is part of the new teacher evaluation system as we go forward. So we're really excited about that, to have our team complete and ready to go. Some classroom technology, this week, I had my first meeting, actually, I was, I was asked to be a part of the Advisory Board for Discovery Education, which is the company that puts out the science textbook. So the opportunity to have our first in-person meeting as part of that advisory board. They're developing a math textbook to start at the middle school and high school levels. So the, they have a prototype underway, which, which I had the opportunity to kind of preview and, and take a look at. And it's really innovative. It, it looks like a fantastic digital product with a similar format to the science textbook, but for, but for math. So we're excited to be a part of that. It's, it's a great opportunity and also could potentially be a great product for us down the road when it's completed. So Discovery Education continues to, to put out some really innovative products for, for a curriculum that we're excited about. And as the superintendent, or I'm sorry, as Andrews mentioned, we're looking, we're expanding the science textbook down to kindergarten through second grade. So the teachers have already started piloting, they were able to, they've, they've turned it on for us to, the last month or so for teachers to use actively. So we're excited to take what's already been done in three, four, and five and move it down to K1 and 2 to really have, you know, for the first time, a comprehensive elementary science curriculum, which, which the teachers and Mr. Woods obviously is very excited about. And although his title is six through 12, he does a tremendous amount of work with, with the elementary staff, which is very much appreciated by me certainly, and, and the teachers as well. So we're excited about that. We just returned from mask queue at Gillette Stadium, many of us, to kind of preview a lot of, a lot of the latest and greatest and identify and make connections about where we're going to go from here with technology. So we're excited to meet and establish some goals going forward in that way. And then finally, November 5th is coming up, our professional day. We have, I want to say, at least 12 teachers who are going to be facilitating and sharing best practice seminars with teachers. So we're tapping into our own internal expertise. Teachers will have the opportunity to sign up for two seminars of their choice that will be facilitated by their colleagues. So they're very excited about it, we're excited about it. We had a great response when we put out for teachers to, to, a lot of it is technology related, classroom instruction related, student support related. So I think it's going to be a great day. We also have Atomic Learning, which is, which is going to be available to all staff and parents and kids, which is, which is an online tutorial for anything technology related. So if you want to learn how to, how to create a spreadsheet or you want to learn how to use a Google Drive, for example, there's step-by-step instructions online that you can follow that we now have access to. And, you know, our technology director is really, really excited about that. So we're going to be presenting that as well on the professional day, as well as some Discovery Education trainers coming back to continue to work with teachers on... with teachers on, on the science textbook. So, we're excited about the 5th. And that's, that's about it for me.
We should say congratulations to those teachers that'll be running the seminars and the programs with the other teachers, because I think that's wonderful, when they come back. And teachers teach teachers, is sharing best practices, you like to say.
That's right. And that's, that's really the, the best way to spread, spread great ideas, you know? And, and we have some teachers that are doing some really innovative things in their classrooms. And there's going to be, you know, the, the response from teachers when I put out the survey as to the different ones that were going to be offered was really positive. And we had over 200 teachers, you know, respond and sign up for, for one of the, you know, one of our seminars. So, it's, it's going to be good.
And honestly, I just want to comment that I'm thrilled over the science, because it's been so fragmented over the years. It's nice that we will have a continuum with that.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're very excited about it.
Excellent. Committee, you have any questions? Thank you. Pass my place. We do have report of subcommittees. Mr. Doucette, we have a report from Policy Subcommittee.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Policy Subcommittee meeting, Policy Subcommittee met last Thursday to finalize a couple of policies. Before we get to the social networking policy, I mean, Policy FF naming policy, social networking policy came up for discussion, and the superintendent has a copy of it, and he's going to share it with all the building principals and put it up on the web in the, in the policies under consideration space, so that they can have opportunity for public input and input from the, the school committee members. It's a really long policy. I didn't want to say it's eight or nine pages long, really detailed. And so, we, we want to get as much input as we can to make sure that it's not going to really impact negatively the operations of the schools. And so, we want to make sure we do it right. General policy issues, we discussed some issues regarding student handbooks, but I think we're all good to go with that. And the last policy we discussed, was the first policy we discussed, but the last one I want to talk, was Policy FF, which was the naming of school buildings, which we talked about at the last meeting and went back to the Policy Subcommittee for a, for a read. So, we made some changes based upon input from the public and based upon input from the, from the committee. And what you have in front of you is a new copy of, of Policy FF as it will appear, should it be approved by the school committee. It was approved unanimously by the Subcommittee with the language in it, as you see in front of you. So, with your permission, I will read Policy FF for the last time.
The last time?
Well, hopefully, we're not going to change Policy FF in the next two weeks. Policy File FF, naming of new facilities. Naming a school facility or part thereof is an important matter that deserves thoughtful attention. Personal prejudice or favoritism or temporary popularity should not be an influence in choosing a school name. A name with educational significance or inspiration should be chosen, or one based upon physical location. The committee also feels it is appropriate to choose a name that will lend dignity and stature to the school, and that parts of facilities should only be named for individuals in cases of extraordinary lifetime achievement or extraordinary circumstances. Upon petition to name a part of a facility after an individual, the school committee shall create a Subcommittee to review the petition and make recommendations. In order to recognize all those who have contributed, the committee will establish a plaque or tree of honored names contributor slash contributors in each new facility or part thereof. Anyone believing a person fits the criteria to have his slash her name placed on the plaque may submit said name for qualification and on approval, purchase a place. The monies derived from this endeavor shall be used for the needs of the facility. Note, the naming of a school building lies with the town and not with the school committee. This policy shall apply only to those areas within the building that falls under the committee's jurisdiction and shall not apply to previously, previously names and places. I think that's supposed to say named places. So, what the policy added back in specifically was, based on physical location, based upon physical location, we had a discussion with Linnhurst School and Ballard School.
Oakland Vale.
Oakland Vale, wanted to put that language back in. And then we specific, from the, from the first read, we added the words extraordinary lifetime achievement, in addition to extraordinary circumstances.
I like that.
And as I said, it was, I voted unanimously by the, by the Subcommittee. I won't make a motion until you have an opportunity to discuss it, if you should choose to, because it closes discussions.
Committee, any discussion?
It sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Madam Chair. Mr. Doucette.
I make a motion to approve File FF as read.
Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there any other reports of subcommittees? Seeing none, we'll go to old business. We had a request for school committee meeting schedule. Originally, well, it's just traditional that the week of an election, the school committee holds its organizational meeting on the Thursday after the election. And it may be a request to leave it up to the new sitting members. Correct?
No. Since the meeting is already scheduled, I'd like to change it, because there's a possibility that several members won't be here if they're reelected.
Yep.
And I don't think the superintendent will be here that night either. So, I don't think it's proper to conduct an organizational meeting with possibly only three members present. I think organizational needs all five members present, as well as a superintendent.
Well, but then, rather than us picking a date, we should just leave it open to, after the election, to schedule the organizational meeting.
How are you going to do that?
Swearing in on Wednesday?
Swearing in, it's on Wednesday.
You guys can swear on Wednesday, come right over here and do it.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I'll be out of town. I'm leaving on vacation Wednesday, Wednesday morning, sorry.
And I'm just, I'm just anticipating the fact that several members might not be here, depending on the outcome of the election, so.
So, we should just leave it up to.
But how would you do that?
The superintendent's office will contact all the members and.
Follow Thursday.
Right?
Yes, we'll do the following Thursday. Because the superintendent acts as the chair of the committee for the establishment of the, so if he's not here, we can't have, well, not we, you guys can't have a meeting.
So, right now, we have that Thursday scheduled. Do you want to just leave it, or do you want to cancel that particular Thursday and leave it up to whatever happens after the election to schedule for an organizational meeting?
Madam Chair, I think you leave that Thursday, that would be the 14th, right?
That would be a normal.
That would be a normal meeting. We could have, the organization's just a quick thing anyway, so.
That's the Thursday after. So, we, so we want to cancel.
It's not scheduled for the 6th, 7th.
7th.
No, we have one scheduled for the.
Why won't be here since?
I don't have it on.
That's, that's historical. It's always the Thursday after the election.
Since you're not going to be here, and depending on the election results, other people won't be here, I don't think it's proper. We don't have a full sitting, five members and the superintendent here. So, I make a motion to.
Cancel the.
Cancel the organizational meeting on November 7th.
And the chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So, I'll just ask the superintendent that after the election, if your office could contact whoever the members are to set a date for organizational meeting.
That, that next week before the regularly scheduled meeting, okay?
Or on the day of, right?
On the day of, okay.
Madam Chair, because the, the organizational meeting is usually established just as an organizational meeting, now you have a organizational meeting on the night of a business meeting. So, the superintendent's going to be relied upon to form the entire agenda himself, as well as, just FYI, because there's going to be no chairperson to assist you in forming the agenda, and there can't be an executive session meeting before, like we currently do. Have to be afterwards if you need one.
I don't foresee that there'll be any real issue anywhere. He can always call you for assistance.
Changing the phone number.
Taking my iPad back. Now you can't get in contact.
Okay. There's no other old business, correct? So, we have new business. We have a recommendation for homeschool programs. That's the superintendent.
Yes. I have one student, a first, first grader at the Oakland Vale School. They submitted and was, was approved.
It means all the criteria to your satisfaction?
Yeah, it does.
Committee, you have any questions? Do you hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Doucette.
Make a motion to approve the homeschool program.
As recommended by.
As recommended by the superintendent.
And the chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are no gifts this evening, correct? And last, under new business, is MOU regarding the past coaching positions, if the superintendent wants to.
Sure. I don't, there, there, these were the same positions from the previous year. And I believe there were three, two middle school positions and the volleyball position. I don't have the document.
They're not in here, right?
Yeah, we didn't get a copy of the document either. So.
Okay. I thought you.
I thought it was included in the.
I thought it was too, till I just looked like a minute ago.
So, can we put this off for the next.
Sure.
Regularly scheduled meeting?
Is it, I mean, is it that complicated?
No, they're, they're the same positions that were budgeted at the same levels. We did check into that. At first, we didn't know. We checked. I had the historicals pulled and, and the same positions were, were funded. The previous year, they just were not included and carried over. They just got missed in the documentation of the.
So, we're, we're drafting a new MOU, and you have that?
Yeah, I have it.
Do you have it tonight?
I, I can get it.
I, I'm just asking because, and not that this is really time-sensitive, but it's my understanding that coaches have already not been paid.
Yeah.
Because this is holding it up. And I don't think that that's really fair if, if the committee feels comfortable to, I mean, these, this is nothing new.
Five-minute recess, so we can go get them? Do you have them on your desk?
Yes, they should be.
Madam Chair, make a motion for a five-minute recess of the Superintendent's Office.
Just a question. In terms of the budget that we have for the athletic department, are these wages already included in that?
Yeah, they're already in the budget.
They should have been included in the budget. It's just the MOU wasn't carried over as it expired. So, you want a recess?
Yes, if we can.
Okay. Chair will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just a two-minute recess. Call it back to order. Say thank you to the superintendent. We have the document here. This is from the original MOU that was a few years ago. So, we just need to, as you can see, the volleyball in the middle school positions. Right?
Madam Chair.
There's no, there's no increases in these, right?
No.
These are the same that have been in the past?
Yep. Yes, they are.
Madam Chair. Mr. Doucette, make a motion to approve the side letter of understanding between Saugus Educated Association and the school committee regarding coaching stipends.
And the chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And we'll just have that typo fixed and.
Absolutely.
I'll come over and sign it when it's ready. Is there any other new business this evening?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Doucette.
I just want to take an opportunity, because it's my last meeting, to, to thank everybody. My family, my wife, who, who let me do this crazy thing. Thank my fellow committee members. We, we, we fight, we argue, but, but it's, it's been a good two years. All the supporters, everybody who voted for me, put signs, put my stupid sign on their lawn, and it was great. Duke?
No, don't forget Duke.
Don't forget. I know he watches. And just, I wanted to say to everybody who's running, good luck. And if I could give one piece of advice, God gave you two ears and one mouth for a reason, so you'd listen twice as much as you talk. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. Any other business this evening?
Well, Madam Chair, we don't want to get too overconfident. An eight-to-win, one last, eight-to-one win last night. Remember those 1960 Pittsburgh Pirates, the ghost of Roberto Clemente, Dick Rote and Dick Stewart? They lost World Series games by the scores of 18 to 4, 12 to 0, and 10 to 2, but still won four one-run games culminating in Bell Maserowski's walk-off homerun in the ninth inning of Game 7. So, our prayers should go out to Jake Peavy, Clay Buckholz, John Lackey, John Lester, Koji, and the rest of them. Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Both meeting adjourned. Thank you.